Good evening and welcome to the city of Battle Creek, Michigan in the Battle Creek City Commission, Planning Commission Workshop. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Sure. Commissioner Kotarski-Smith. Commissioner LaCoss.
Here.
Commissioner Lance. Commissioner Morris.
The other one, other one.
Mayor Bankey.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Reynolds.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sophia.
Here.
And Commissioner Gray. Commissioner Godfrey. Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner Dennison. Commissioner Moten. And Commissioner White.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on our agenda is the presentation and I'll call upon our City Manager to introduce our... Excuse me, I overlooked a public comment. Do we have any public comments at this time? Do we have any public comments? We'll go on to our City Manager. Amanda, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Planning Commission Members. Tonight we have an update on our housing strategy engagement and Darcy Schmidt is here. She is our Planning Supervisor for the city of Battle Creek.
Good evening, thank you so much for your time tonight so that we can give you a brief update on what has been going on with the housing strategy engagement. First of all, I want to talk about all of the people that have been involved in this process. It's been a really cohesive process with using Planning Commissioners, Mayor or Vice Mayor Sophia. We've had many housing stakeholder members as part of a steering committee that has helped to put together an engagement plan that has helped us in the process along. The engagement plan was put in your packet. This has some wonderful information and again, it was put together by the Steering Committee for Housing and Community Development and they will help us through the process until the end. We, prior to the engagement process, the Steering Committee worked hard to put this document together. Its goal is to create an inclusive equitable planning process that generally engages the Battle Creek community, particularly hard-to-reach populations, in shaping the housing strategy plan to meet current and future housing needs. There's also eight objectives in that plan that you should take a look at and those are all the objectives that we're trying to cover through this engagement process from the beginning till the end. Sure. Oh, okay.
So what?
Does everyone else have the strategy and community engagement strategy?
It was attached to our agenda, I know.
Okay, I will get that to you all. I'm not sure why... Okay, we will make sure, yeah, we'll make sure you get that right away. But this, this document is really our document that we're trying to follow completely and this takes care of the general public, it takes care of a lot of hard-to-reach populations, how do we reach out to them? And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slides. Okay. Next slide. So, we really had two different processes that we've worked on so far. The first part started in August and staff had held one-on-one meetings with a number of community stakeholders that had to do with housing or populations that are hard-to-reach and often get overlooked. We have several more that we will be holding, but we have had so far 13 meetings with stakeholders. These meetings have led to other meetings and a development of a survey for those that are unhoused. We have been able to reach out to, during a recent program that was held at Full Blast, we circulated, there were 300 homeless persons there that were able to take advantage of some of the opportunities for services and information and we were able to get 30 of these surveys filled out. We will do other outreach processes to other homeless facilities and other methods where we can get input on various reasons for why they're in the situation they're in and what would the best situations be for them, like transitional supportive housing, what type of housing would they like to see next. We have a lot of people interested in doing supportive housing. We have a couple churches that are looking and doing supportive transitional homes on their properties, so there are some opportunities. So we want to get a background on what that need is and connect them with our partners where they can get their services as well. Some of the other meetings that we're having are, have been open to the public. We have our Public Housing 101 meeting. That meeting, it was held with our consulting team, Laney Wells from Aligned Planning, Ryan Kilpatrick to Flywheel and Stephanie Balki from Balki Planning and Design. They have assisted the city in doing the public outreach process as far as doing public meetings, providing documents. There are a couple informational documents that should have been in your packet that were not only given out at all of the meetings, but they were also... They were also provided on the website, so you can go to the housing strategy website and it looks like for some reason you've got different information and we'll get that to you.
Lisa's making copies right now.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, because those are really helpful documents. Some of you may have received them at the various meetings you went to and people have really enjoyed having them to take home. These meetings, especially the 101 meeting, there was a lot of information provided at that meeting about economics, what the housing condition is in Battle Creek right now and what the economics will be in the future and how we get housing and what tools that we may be able to use to fill the gaps between building a house and what is affordable to be able to get financed through a bank. We also held stakeholder meetings on the 14th of October. There were three different stakeholder meetings. The first meeting was between builders and developers. The second meeting was realtors and lenders and the final meeting was a meeting with Neighborhood Planning Council leadership and all of these were open to the public, so we didn't just have those type of stakeholders, we had just people generally interested in those topics. During the Housing 101, you know, one of the, there was a lot of great information given by Ryan Kilpatrick. That video is also on the Strategic Housing Planning website where all of this information will be collected and housed for everyone to review. That can be reviewed at any time, but there's just a few things that really came up. Basically, the majority of our housing stock was built prior to 1960. We also haven't had, more than 9% of our occupied housing units weren't built until after 2000, so that tells us that our housing stock is getting very old and some of it's very old and leads to some of the demolitions that we've seen in some of the neighborhoods and the vacant lots, which is going to provide us an opportunity in the future. Between 2014 and 2024, according to our data from our Building Department, there were 496 houses demoed in neighborhoods closest to the downtown. It's a lot of houses and there were only 15 homes rebuilt, so it doesn't, there's room for a lot of growth there. Estimated cost to build a new house during this process, we've heard from developers and different people with the expertise that the typical house is going to cost over $200,000 of square, or $200, or $200 a square foot, so a $1,000 or a thousand square foot home is going to cost more than most people can afford. So, we are going to have to figure out ways to bridge that financial gap. The next slide, please. Some of that, one of the activities that was held at the 101 meeting was a situation where there were eight jars. Each of the jars had one of the priorities listed in the slide there and each member of the attendee at the meeting was asked to put, take three pennies and pick their top three and put the pennies in the jar. And the results from that process were the top three were housing mix, infill, land bank, city land, convert office to residential, and then going down promote multiple family housing, promote single housing. The last was provide pre-approved housing plans. And again, this was a smaller group of people and I think once we talk more about the pre-approved plans with people that are developers and people that are getting into the building process, starting their own companies, that pre-approved housing plan that can cut the cost of some of their services that they need to provide will be beneficial. But this just gives us kind of a touch of what people are thinking, what they're hearing. They, I've heard a lot of people very excited about the video, so if you haven't had a chance to view it, please take a look at it. There's a lot of great information and it really provokes a lot of thought about housing development. The next, another activity that was held at the Housing 101 was a situation where there were different pins, different colors that represented different types of housing and the housing, people were asked to put the type of housing that they felt would go in a certain area that was reasonable for a certain area. So we could kind of get an idea for those that are in certain neighborhoods or certain areas, what they felt was in a reasonable type of housing that would blend in with their existing housing. For the Post and Franklin area, there was duplex, townhouse, emergency transitional housing near Main Street. For Washington Heights, NPC 2, duplex and townhouse and multiple family infill near downtown and along Michigan Avenue. And Urbendale, NPC number five, duplex infill. So, we didn't have any pins in any other areas of the community, but we are looking at putting up an interactive activity like this on the website that people can continue to do and do this particular activity and give us more input. Okay. The next meetings that we had were the stakeholder meetings that I had mentioned. With the stakeholder meetings, there was a desire for the building and development, there was a desire for... Missed a page here. So, much of the discussion was rooted in escalating rising cost of construction and the capital gap that exists. A couple of participants shared smaller housing construction, single and two-family units that they do to reduce and eliminate financial gap. These housing units were 600 square feet and were built for less than $200 a square foot. Actually, they, one of them said it was as low as $160 a square foot. So, that's a lot more reasonable than what we've been hearing and that model, of course, was no basement, limited size and limited details. But it was definitely, they showed pictures and it was definitely a nice, nice product. Probably the overarching conversation was regarding the need for small and diverse housing construction types. More and more people are realizing that a smaller house with all the amenities is going to be more affordable and is not a bad way to go. We've heard a lot of conversation about 600 to 800 square foot homes being a reasonable size for livability, especially for young adults and seniors that want to get out of their four-bedroom home and get into something smaller that's less upkeep. Some of the comments were modifying zoning to allow building non-conforming lots as administrative process rather than having to send them to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Any lot of record can be built on, however, that in our code currently, it states that they have to meet all of the zoning dimensional requirements and sometimes they can meet most of them, but there's always a setback or a width of the lot or something that they have to get a variance for. And they usually can get it because it's, you know, definitely a unique situation, but they would like to have that as an administrative situation. Also, the cost of utility hookups. That was a big conversation about the huge number that that adds to their developments and any type of assistance or some type of fund that would help with the utility hookups would be of value to them as well. Then we met with the realtors and the lenders and there was a lot of great information. One of the things that was really important to them that they brought up, they were really happy about having an opportunity to talk to staff and meet with Ryan Kilpatrick and get an introduction to the economics of what they're doing. And they would like to have this be an ongoing process where staff from the Community Service Department meet with them quarterly or two times every two week, or every two months so that we keep an open dialogue of what housing is selling, what's, what's not working, some of the things they hear from people that come in and look at the neighborhoods in the city of Battle Creek and housing that is available. And so, we are working now to set that process up. It will probably be working with the Realtors Association and have a select group of Realtors that we'll work with, the number thrown out was like eight, and city staff to talk through some of the topics. Lenders shared that frequently they have individuals and family who are pre-approved, but not at an amount high enough to enter our current housing market. And it's not just that we, they can't afford the houses that are out there in the market, there's just not enough in their price range that they're qualified for. So, it's the number and the level of qualification and the cost of these houses. Again, key points were shared regarding housing stock availability. For example, approximately 30% of single-family, three-bedroom and two-bedroom homes are occupied by a family, a couple empty nesters that raise their family in the home. Today's economic market with the high interest rates and housing costs is driving decisions to stay in their large home that is locked in at a much lower cost. So, interest rates and not downsizing, which then doesn't open up stock for other families and young people. There, there's really no incentive to downsize and that's been the case for quite, quite some time. They were also asked about the type of housing that's being sought in today's market and the conversation was, again, about smaller homes being able to be marketed. There was a lot of conversation about cottage homes being anywhere from 800 to 1,000 square feet. They think they could market that all day long. And when we're talking about cottage homes, we're talking about a small patch of six or eight cottage-style homes that could be one-story, two-story, but no more than 1,000 square feet with a central area that's open space, that's joint use for the development. They just have had such a need for, you know, the younger generation and those that don't want to stay in their, their large homes and have the upkeep. So, that was another thing that they felt was important to look into. NPC, the Leadership Meeting, we had a really good turnout at this meeting and very good interactive conversations. There was a lot of conversation about the neighborhoods and, you know, the importance of having a neighborhood that, and entrances and neighborhood generally that had, didn't have boarded up houses or buildings. If you're going to attract people to the neighborhood, they're not going to be attracted with things like that and other code violations that may be apparent in some of the neighborhoods. Residents discussed support from construction of a variety of different housing types, but they were very clear that there needs to be enough onsite parking. We have, especially in the Post neighborhood, we have a significant issue with joint parking, the way it was developed for the factories, joint parking, some of the houses that have been demolished have two parking or two curb cuts, so people are, of course, using both curb cuts and there may be a driveway in one area. So it causes a maintenance issue and a code issue. Additional conversations, again, were about how to get the neighborhood involved in helping to have pride in the neighborhood and many of them have such good emotions and feeling about their neighborhoods and what their neighborhoods are to them and we heard a lot of that. And on Thursday, they were, at that particular meeting, they were asked to choose areas in their neighborhood where there were vacant lots that they would like to see some type of development built. And they chose, each one neighborhood chose a different type of housing and that will be discussed further. We'll have some graphics that kind of show how that could fit into these lots and allow more conversation and activities. We have a long way to go on our housing strategy. We have a lot of one-on-one meetings, a lot of individual small group outreach processes. We are planning on doing additional surveys. We don't want to have a lot of different surveys, but there are certain populations that, for instance, the unhoused population, the questions that we're asking them aren't necessarily going to be the questions we're asking the general public and there might be another population through our conversations with stakeholders that will lead us to believe that certain questions aren't going to be comfortable to ask certain populations. So we're, we're taking that into account and there will be, anyone can, can reply to any of the surveys that we put online and that we have paper copies for, but we do, we'll label them specific to the type of housing that, or population that would want to look at that. So they're not looking at a survey that's several pages long and doesn't necessarily relate to their situation. So, we do, like I said, have a meeting on November 20th, or not, yeah, November 20th this week. We will continue to target populations and also target public input meetings for projects that we have, or properties that we have that are very large. For instance, the Riverside Golf Course and the former Bronson Hospital, we've had conversations in this year alone with two fairly big proposals for those sites and it would be nice to have some conversation with the residents before there's another proposal to get more input on what, what and how we could make sure those properties are developed in a way that they're comfortable and be able to either direct the developers that are interested in the process for a conditional rezoning or have something in place that will allow more flexibility. And I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about, yes?
I was just wondering... Oh, thank you very much. I was just wondering, thank you for that presentation. Around your question about some of these upcoming public engagement opportunities, have you thought of aligning with some of the organizations that draw a lot of young professionals? Like maybe partnering with penetrator events or something?
Yes.
At one of their events, so you can have surveys there or the new uproot market, maybe have some at the register or some, something to try and get the input of the...
People that are already there.
25 to 40-year-olds.
Yes.
And, you know, everybody hangs out at all of those events, but I'm just saying, some way of targeting them and working with organizations that... some way of targeting them and working with organizations that usually draw that age group so you can get their input as well.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great idea. And a lot of our partnerships that are people that I've spoken with already have organized or are organizing meetings that, a, a usual meeting they have that pulls in quite a few people, but like the Women's Co-op, they have a monthly greet and meet and they're going to hold one where they're advertising for us to discuss housing concerns and we'll, we'll do that, I think, in February. So, yeah, those are some good, good opportunities.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission before we go to the commissioners? Bill Morris, do you have a question?
Yes.
All right. We'll go up to the City Commissioner then.
I just had a question. I know you said that there was going to be bilingual online surveys. What language are we doing those in?
Spanish for sure. We're working with VOSs and they're, they're willing to help us out too on some of the costs and having meetings at their site. But we are trying, we've had a difficult time reaching the director for the Burmese Center and we're still reaching out to them. So we want, we want to find out from them more what questions would be better directed at this population and also if we are going to be able to get any information. We spent a considerable amount of money with the consolidated plan, doing four different Burmese dialects, and we didn't have any. So we're, we're trying to get ahold of them first and then develop.
Okay, yeah, I understand there's quite an issue with dialects there.
Yes.
What about as far as, I know we have a growing Congolese population. Is there a possibility of adding that as well?
Yeah, absolutely. That is, I think, was added to the outreach strategy plan. I wasn't aware of that population, but yes, that was one that was brought up as well.
Okay. And one of the other things I just wanted to point out for anyone that's watching online is like ADUs, I know a lot of people aren't familiar with them. Those are just accessory dwelling units that are on the same property as another house, correct?
That's correct. And, and there's, there's some things that we've been hearing that most, most residents aren't familiar with, but with an accessory structure, whether it's connected to the house or separated from the house, if there's no entrance between the primary structure and the accessory structure, the taxing will be different. It won't be part of your homestead taxing. It'll be different. You will be taxed, you will have to pay the millage on schools and they'll take a, a balance of the value of the property that's part homestead and, and part, so that's, that's good to know. We are going to be working with our assessor to put together a kind of a cheat sheet that kind of says, if you have a housing, a house that's worth this much and you're planning this, this is kind of the increase that you could expect.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, because that's something that, you know, a lot of people just aren't going to understand and be aware of.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
John Guthrie?
We have a project to rebuild the Habitat for the Burmese. We have Habitat had very, very good success with Burmese families. We moved into Habitat Homes.
Great.
So it is a population that is looking for in housing.
Yeah, we might elicit your thoughts on how we can do that. We do, Melody in my department knows the director, so she's been trying to get ahold of her. But I think the community, if you have a connection to, that would be great.
Vice Mayor? Chris Simmons?
Yeah, just a, a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. I don't know if we're just doing questions now and then some commentary later.
Either or.
Okay.
Or the better.
The, the questions I have on the, the builders that participated, can you tell us about what that participation was? Were these primarily small businesses or any big, larger firms and engagement there? I just wonder how comprehensive the outreach is to the building.
The outreach was very comprehensive, but we did not, excuse me, get a huge turnout. But we did get, you know, a lot of local, smaller businesses. We did get a company that builds bigger homes, one company, and I can't think of the name of that right now, but I could probably, I have a, a sign-in sheet. I could send that your way to all of you and so you'd have a better idea.
I mean, we know who operates in the city, you know, pulling permits and all like that. So we use those, those resources?
Yes, we use those resources and then reached a little further. We actually, Calhoun County Land Bank sent that out to all of their connections through the, the, their process. And so, yeah, we were, that was one that I was surprised wasn't as well of a turnout, but we did have some good conversation, but that's something that we still need to reach out to. We're not done with these stakeholders because it's like we haven't found out enough information. But it is, it is comforting to know that we do have people out there that are interested in doing housing and we're, we have more that are getting their builder's licenses right now.
All these stakeholders that you've engaged are an important piece of the process, but the builders are going to be the ones that are
Absolutely.
Putting their, an investment and resources in, into these and, and whatever we can do to streamline that process.
Yeah.
As far as the other outreach, I talked about, I know there's a lot of, you know, homeless and the lower-income folks. I, I'm thinking, hopefully we reach out to our employers. I mean, go into Denso, like, hey, can we have a community meeting in, in your, I mean, a thousand, a couple thousand people working in there, can we have a, a meeting with your employees and what their housing issues are and what, what they would like to see. Churches, there, there are a lot of other resources, I think, to reach that middle, again, seniors maybe, NPCs, folks that are engaged in that process. But the other folks, maybe they're busy working and they couldn't come to the meeting or they have children that they're, they're tending to. Just broadening that scope of, of where we're reaching out to.
Yeah, that's great.
And I'll, I'll let, I have some other thoughts, but I'll let
Come back, come back to you.
While she's still up here for, for the questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I don't have it.
All right. Just a couple observations. I was speaking to our assistant city manager Ted Derry about affordability of a home. And I know that there's at least two new homes that have been built in Battle Creek that they can't sell today because people can't qualify for those mortgages. That's a concern that I have. What is the estimated cost per square footage that we should be shooting for in order to sell some of these homes? I know Habitat's shooting for like $170,000 on the sale of their homes.
Yeah, that's a good question. That's something that I can have Patrick, or Ryan Kilpatrick, figure out for us and, and kind of do another informational sheet on. Because the, the, the one developer that I, or builder that I was talking about earlier, he said that he was able to build a house or the smaller units and the duplexes for $160 a square foot. And that's, and, and was able to sell them right away within three days. So that's a good example of a mark to hit. And with Habitat for Humanity, the 170, you know, when you think about that, that's not including labor, correct? That's all donated labor. So we, we will want to talk more with the gentleman that was building those homes in Albion.
Right. I'm also observing that there are multiple families that are sometimes living in homes, even in the Lakeview area, until they get enough money to purchase a home by themselves and then they in turn have multiple families move in with them. I mean, we're talking two and possibly four families and living in a house.
Wow.
Yeah. I also have observed on the north side of Battle Creek where they're renting out rooms instead of entire sections of homes, like there's five or six people that are renting out rooms in a house, especially a larger home
Yeah.
At the cost of $1,000 a month, which I think is very high, but people are finding that reasonable.
Yeah, and, and they are. And we have had people call lately. It is perfectly fine if you're a homeowner and you rent out your rooms, it does not need a rental license.
Right.
It's a valid, and more people are calling and asking about that. And, and, and it's understandable, you know, if you've got extra rooms and you're struggling financially and you know people that are struggling financially, you know, it's the way to go. And for, as far as families, I'm hearing that all over the place. People have their 30 and 40-year-old children and their kids living with them until they can get back on their feet, so.
Interesting times.
It is, it is.
All right. Are there any other planning commissioners that have questions or additional comments? Any City Commissioner? Ted?
Mayor, I wonder if I could just interject something real quick too. If you, if you haven't had a chance to see Brian, it's Brian, right?
Ryan.
Ryan, Ryan's presentation. A lot of very good data in that presentation, including a series of slides that showed certain professions and then what those professions were actually making in our market and then the affordability, affordability scale for housing for those individuals. So it might take like a teacher, for example, and then this wage and then affordability based on a certain percentage of your income, then what you could afford to pay in a mortgage or rent each month. And it was, it was just really good information in terms of where we should be targeting, to your question earlier, Mayor, where we should be targeting our resources in terms of what type of housing we're building at what, at, at what, at what level of, of expense.
Thanks, Ted. Chris?
Yeah, just a, a couple of other, the comments. Thank you for asking, answering the questions earlier. You touched briefly on taxes. I have a large lot, my, my property's an acre and a half and I've thought about, hey, I could build a smaller little house, grandmother's cottage kind of thing over there. But then when I hear, when I hear, that's not going to be, that's not going to be, you're exempted as far as your homestead property, I'm like, ugh.
Yeah.
I mean, not that City of Battle Creek is the only taxing jurisdiction, there are a lot of layers here that, that just make, so taxes, we can't forget, that is a, a very big consideration in folks' mind that might want to make an investment for, for, for a property, a development.
Right.
So my philosophy has been all along, and it seems like our city, we've been focusing on something very important, on putting in a lot of resources into trying to get enough points to get these Michigan Lytech credits, develop low-income housing, workforce, we need all of the above. And I'm glad to hear you're talking not just multifamily
Right.
Those Lytech kind of things. You're talking about private developers coming in, building small, and I think small, small is the way to go. When you talk to the big developers, they're like, the only way I'm going to make any money is if I build 2,000, 2,500 square foot house and sell it for $400,000. And there is a little market for that, but there's so much in between. Multifamily, low-income, those large ones, middle fam, middle-income, smaller houses, starter houses. We just don't have that. And so what you're talking about here, and I think we're just kind of scratching the surface, one of the things I noticed in the presentation was a discussion about housing TIF. Look at what we do with economic development and what a priority that is and what we do with our BC TIF and our other, where we capture those and reinvest those into doing economic development. We all say housing is one of our number one priorities, then we need to make it a priority like we do economic development. I first see, you, you talked about Mercy, the old Mercy Pavilion site on 20th Street. You, you mentioned, what was the other site? The Riverside Golf Course. There's going to be a large piece of property opened up, Southwestern Junior High that's demolished.
Right.
A couple of large parcels that we should also be thinking about and including that because the Battle Creek Public Schools want to see housing development on that.
Yes.
So I would envision, and I've had some conversations with our new city manager about this and some fellow commissioners, to see us maybe taking some large tracts of land like that, saying, this is a housing TIF and we're not going to abate property taxes. We're going to say, you, you buy the house, you're going to pay property taxes, we're going to collect that, it's money we're not already collecting, and roll in that into site improvements. Talked about utility connections are a very expensive concern. Those kind of funds could be used for that type of development. How, here's our pre-approved plan to, to build. Here is the city not charging you an application fee for a permit, a building permit and inspections and all like that. That would go a long way. So I think we can have a lot of discussions and I, I think I'm really glad to see we're starting to scratch the surface on there. So much farther, more we can do and, and farther that we can take this, so looking forward to it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm looking into and hoping to find an easy way for the city to have some type of documentation or information from MADC possibly that kind of guides people. There are so many people that have no idea where to start to look into a TIF to see it's even feasible, right? Or how it would even fit into their plan for a development of that size. And it would be nice to have something that could at least guide them to the right people to find out.
And, and it doesn't have to be, hey, we have a 15-acre piece of property on 20th Street that you're the sole developer of. The city could say, hey, we have subdivided this into 50, 60 parcels
Right.
And they're ready to go and you are a small builder, you want to take on one of these parcels and build it? And then we have a fund, a TIF or a capture that we rolled these investment, this, this property taxes. And you could even do like we're talking about doing with the LDDA and bond it out for the future and say, we project, you know, we're going to collect $50 million over the next 20 years. Let's front-load this, put streets in, put sewer in, put water in. We need to be doing all of the above, so thank you.
Great.
Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner LoC.
I think just to piggyback off what Chris said, yeah, making it as easy as possible for developers is key here. I've been taking a lot of housing courses and things like that. They also talked about making neighborhoods as accessible as possible and I didn't see anyone talk about that, including, you know, having banks, pharmacies, things like that all within walking distance of a neighborhood is really important. And then we have to find a way to get those people that are in those bigger houses that don't necessarily need them out of there and into those smaller properties.
Yes.
So we open up that stock. And then also for, as far as their Burmese community, the county commissioner Dominic would be a good contact.
Great.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to thank everyone for participating in this joint meeting between the Battle Creek City Commission and the Battle Creek Planning Commission. And I want to thank the planning staff for their due diligence. And with that being said, we're going to adjourn. Thank you very much.